Hello everyone, can I please welcome you to this meeting of Cabinet? The time is 9:30. The meeting will be held under the regulations which came into effect on the 4th of April 2020 in response to the Covid situation. My name is Lucille Thompson. I'm Chair of Cabinet and Leader of the Council. Just want to run through a few housekeeping reminders as we're working under new working practices in response to the regulations. First of all, can I just remind everyone present in this virtual meeting that please keep your microphones muted and your camera off whilst you're not addressing the meeting. This will reduce background noise and avoid any unintentional disturbances. Please, can I also advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed from the Council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the Council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Cabinet members and officers, where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function of the meeting to indicate that you wish to speak or to raise a point of order or explanation, and I will then invite you to speak at the appropriate time. Each member will be invited to speak in turn, therefore I would encourage all members to keep your contributions as clear and concise as possible. And when speaking or referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number. Thank you very much. Now, because of the number of members of public registered to speak regarding the item on the Bar End depot, I will be altering the agenda order to take that as the first item of business at item eight. Please note that the duration of this virtual meeting is scheduled for two hours. We've got quite a lot on our agenda, so just remind everyone to try and keep their comments brief. Any business not conducted after this time will be deferred to an alternative date or to the next meeting. And finally, if Cabinet members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat function? I will announce to the meeting that you are to leave the meeting. So can I ask Nancy, please, to undertake a roll call of members of Cabinet to confirm who is present this morning?
Thank you Chair. Well, councillor Thompson, you're obviously here in the room. Councillor Cutler, please.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson.
Good morning, present.
Councillor Lerni.
Good morning, present.
Councillor Murphy.
Good morning, present.
I'll come back to councillor Porter. Councillor Prince.
Good morning and present.
Thank you Cabinet members. Chair, it doesn't appear that councillor Porter is in the meeting just yet, so we'll check on that and...
Yes, I wonder if you could, because obviously she's got a couple of items on the agenda to come that she's meant to be presenting, so that would be helpful.
Oh, sorry, apologies, councillor Todd.
Yeah, present.
Sorry councillor Todd.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Apart from councillor Porter, there are no apologies for absence, so we'll move on to membership of Cabinet committees, and I'm not aware of any changes to be made. So if we could move on to item number three, declaration of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us today? No, I'm not hearing any. Okay. Thank you very much. Item number four, requests from invited councillors. I do have a list of councillors wishing to speak on various items on the agenda, and I'm assuming that you would all like to speak as and when that item comes up.
Yes, please Chair, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number five is minutes. Minutes of the previous meetings on the 16th of September and on the 29th of September, and they are on pages five to 12 of the Agenda Pack and 13 to 16 respectively, also of the Agenda Pack. Is it... Can we approve these minutes, members?
Approved.
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you.
Chair, sorry to interrupt, I believe councillor Portman might be in the meeting now, if I can just confirm that, please.
Yes, I am, I'm sorry, I couldn't get in first, I've just changed machine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, I did just hear your voice councillor Porter. Right, we now come on to item number six, which is public participation, and I do have a list of six members of the public who wish to speak on various items, so I will call you in order. The first one is Mr Corcoran, who wishes to speak on item nine, and he's from Twyford Parish Council. So could I ask you, Mr Corcoran, to switch on your camera and your microphone, and you have three minutes to address us, please?
Chair, are you hearing me loud and clear?
Yes.
Yes. I'll go straight on. Right. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of Twyford Parish Council, speak about our SIL application for the flood mitigation scheme and the consequences of your refusal of that request. In short, it puts Twyford Parish Council at risk of not being able to deliver its housing requirement, its housing allocation, its affordable housing, its parking, its neighbourhood plan, because the flood mitigation scheme is central to the whole of that complex of schemes. I had a long conversation yesterday with Simon Finch, and I'm grateful for that. There are many points of agreement between him and us. Firstly, that Twyford is a complex integrated scheme with multiple benefits delivered. Secondly, contrary to the minute of the panel, the flood mitigation scheme is not primarily for maintenance. And secondly, that very good progress on a range of projects, especially the car park. Thirdly, that Winchester had not contacted either Hampshire County Council or the South Downs to coordinate. And thirdly, and finally, that money might be allocated to this but not until next year, and that creates a major problem. So I'm aware that the panel may have allocated its community money, but I want to ask three things which could enable this project to go forward. Firstly, to enable Twyford Parish Council to use the £65,000 allocated for the car park for the flood mitigation scheme. Why? Because the flood mitigation scheme has to come first. Unless the flood mitigation scheme is delivered, the car park itself is at risk. And secondly, because the car park is now 75% funded without the Winchester City Council £65,000, and Twyford Parish Council could make good the deficit if the £65,000 was wired to the flood mitigation scheme. Simon raised this as a possibility. Secondly, to get the three major authorities involved here together. Hampshire, who support our flood mitigation scheme, the South Downs, who are our planning authority and SIL authority too, and the city. It would not surprise you to hear that Twyford have found it difficult to coordinate these three authorities, despite each authority supporting different aspects of the scheme. I would ask you, please, to instruct your officers to engage with the parish council on this matter as a matter of urgency. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution, Mr Corcoran. When we come to that item, which of course you're welcome to stay online to listen to the debate, I'm sure that councillor Porter and also possibly Mr Finch, who is in the room with us today, will be able to answer some of those queries, but thank you, thank you very much for your contribution. If I could ask you to turn your camera and microphone off now, that would be great. Thank you. I'd now like to call on Charles Radcliffe, who would like to speak on the, well, formerly item 12, it's now going to be item eight, the depot site. Could you please unmute your microphone and put your camera on, please? And you've got three minutes to address us.
Thank you very much, Chair, and hello everybody. Appreciate this opportunity to say a few words. I'd like, if I may, to touch briefly on two issues in fact. The Central Winchester Regeneration Scheme in Silver Hill, and then my main remark on the potential sale of the Bar End depot site. On Silver Hill, I'm sure residents will welcome the fact that the council is at last moving forward with regeneration. This comes after many years of dither and delay under previous administrations, which repeatedly tried and failed to regenerate the area. The proposal, in particular, to turn King's Walk into a hub for new businesses in the creative sector is genuinely exciting, and I hope it goes some way to making Winchester an incubator for startups and more of a magnet for creative talent. Likewise, converting corporate house into affordable housing for young people and key workers is a very positive step. There's a chronic shortage of decent, low-cost housing in the centre of Winchester. Now, on the Bar End depot, I understand that the council is minded to sell the site, which raises real concerns for many of us. Residents in Bar End and in neighbouring Highcliff have long been promised new community facilities and a local shop, both of which are conspicuously lacking. They've repeatedly been told that the depot site would be redeveloped only after proper consultation with the affected communities. Madam Chair, that consultation has not happened, not properly, and by selling the site, there is a risk that the council will lose control over what gets built there. You'll have seen a proposal put forward by a group of concerned local residents to form a community development trust. The trust, as I understand it, would take on the task of developing the site, selling off parcels of land to development partners, and focusing on delivering community assets. That seems to me like an idea that's well worth exploring. But otherwise, if the council is going to sell directly to a developer, I hope Cabinet will commit today to selecting a proposal based on best consideration and not just on the best price. Whatever modality is chosen, I urge Cabinet to listen to local residents and to put their interests first. I think we all understand the council's need to raise cash and address budget shortfalls in what is, in the wake of Covid, a very challenging financial context, not just for this council but for councils across the country. But just let's make sure that those who benefit from the redevelopment of the Bar End site include those who live closest to it, and not just the developers and their shareholders. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr Radcliffe, and well done for keeping within the time. That's brilliant. Thank you very much for your contribution, and as I said to the previous speaker, when we get to this item on the agenda, which is coming up fairly soon, all the points that you've raised will be addressed. Can I now call on Kim Gottlieb, please, to unmute his microphone and put his camera on and address us?
Do you want to mention to Mr Corcoran that he's still on the picture? His picture's still up on the screen, one of the early speakers.
Okay.
Anyway.
Right, okay.
I'm looking at him rather than you, and I'd much rather look at you if I may. Good morning anyway, nice to see you all. I don't want to repeat what others may be saying shortly, but it's plain that there has been no public consultation on the future of this site. It's also plain that no amount of red lines in the contract or planning or development briefs can effectively control what is built on this site. Planning policy for the site is very open and will permit virtually anything, particularly in this build-build-build environment. It's also the case the council will constantly be on the back foot, and so concerned about the money side of things, that it will inevitably roll over every time it's asked to make changes to the contract or to a development. This is how it works, and there's no point claiming otherwise. If the council is not prepared to carry out the development itself, which in my view it could have done relatively easily, the only way in which the local community can be effectively protected from inappropriate or excessive development is if it manages the developments itself. Community development trusts were born for this, and there have been developments of different scales and types successfully carried out all over the country. Obviously, there are many hurdles in the process, the first of which is setting up the trust in the first place with trustees and a clear remit, and of course it won't have the resources to compete with other developers. It is, however, entirely doable, and there is a great deal of goodwill and local talent and experience that we hope to draw upon in putting together a proposal that will stand alongside and hopefully be more attractive than the other offers it will see, than the council, sorry, I'll start again, be more attractive than the offers the council will receive from others. What we need more than anything else to start is the time to get ourselves together and room to find the answers to the many questions that have already been posed. We need the council to give us that time and room, and generally to accommodate what could be one of the most exciting community-led initiatives in many years. Much is said about working with the community, but this is an opportunity to put that aspiration into practice, and without ignoring the fact that the council wants to raise funds, we hope the council will do just that and do all it can to help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kim. As I said to the previous speaker, we're coming to this item shortly, and some of the points you raised, well, I'm pretty sure most of the points you raised will be acknowledged during that debate. Can I now ask Janet Berry, please, to unmute her microphone and put her camera on and address us, please?
Hello.
Hello.
Can you hear me?
We can, yes, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, on behalf of the Highcliff Community Forum for Action, to ask some questions and comment about these proposals on the Bar End site. Will the council ensure that the concerns of residents whose homes back onto the site are fully considered before decisions are made? The John Thompson Highcliff Community Planning Report of 2003 refers to the depot site as a nuisance neighbour due to its usage. Residents need a better neighbour. The design framework laid out some principles of development due to the closeness of residential properties, but it's not clear that all residents in Milland Road have been fully consulted on these, either during the leisure centre consultations or subsequently, nor has it necessarily been easy to raise concerns, given the design framework's flexible approach to future uses, in order to, as it says, safeguard the long-term position of the council as landlord. Is the council going to fully consider the needs and aspirations of the local community regarding what could be included in the site? Paragraph 6.1 suggests extensive consultation, but from the early stages of consultation on the new leisure centre, the depot site was seen by the council as a separate project, as in the council's Asset Management Plan 2016 to 21. The design framework consultation only covered principles of development. In June 2020, the Housing and Business Committee suggested that the council would engage and consult with local residents before any decision to sell. This has not happened yet. The depot insight group has suggested a full consultation could take place once a detailed scheme is in place, but this does not allow for input by residents to help shape proposals. Whilst the report mentions a local store, there is no specific reference to A1 or E usage in the planning note. The community has, in previous engagement exercises, suggested a number of developments or facilities which may be appropriate to this site, none of which have yet come to fruition. The Highcliff Community Plan was produced in the hope that the council and other organisations would support the community in implementing its actions. These included setting up a community-run hub or shop, increasing activities for children and young people, a social club for older people, a community centre. Given the right opportunity, the local community is creative in its response and should be listened to. Has the council considered that the site could provide opportunities for the local community to do things differently in light of the Covid-19 crisis? In conclusion, the depot site needs to become a friendly neighbour in our local community and to present a good image because of its location as a gateway to the entrance of Highcliff as well as the city of Winchester. Full discussion about the possible options and community engagement needs to take place before any decisions are made about selling this site, in order to ensure that the community can contribute to its future and be happy with the outcome. The council strategy says that it wants to ensure that people are involved earlier and more deeply in the design and decision-making process. Please, can we try and achieve this for Highcliff?
Thank you very much, Janet, for your contribution. That's great, and also thank you for keeping to the three-minute time limit, too. That's really helpful. Thank you. Could I now call on Mr Chris Allen to unmute and put his camera on, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Chris Allen, a Highcliff resident, and was a member of the former Bar End Forum. I'm speaking to report cab 3268, which was item, now item 12, I think, eight, regarding the depot site future. I may be repeating some points that have already been made, but I think it's probably worth emphasising some of these. The redevelopment of the depot could provide much-needed community facilities for the people of Highcliff and Bar End, and realise opportunities which will only become apparent if local people are allowed to express their aspirations. I feel it will be a grave mistake if this site is simply offered for sale and the market is allowed to dictate the contents of the development. Priorities such as the balance of uses and things like environment and biodiversity versus profit will be left instead to the developer. Section 2.2 of this report makes clear that for the council, price will be the primary factor, not community benefit, nor indeed suitability, or even carbon footprint. Section 6.1, probably as you've already heard, states that engagement with the local community about the depot was performed during the leisure centre project consultation. This was categorically not the case. Any discussion of the depot site was forbidden by the previous administration, and their agents, Stride Tregon. There was no discussion about at all about possible uses or opportunities. The depot disposal presentation at June's Business and Housing Policy Meeting timetabled engagement with residents for June and July this year. This has not taken place, and my experience of the leisure centre planning process has made clear that if it's left until then, it will be too late, because we saw reasonable requests and evidence concerns simply brushed aside in the rush to make progress. I feel the city council's financial deficit should not be an excuse for poor practice. This administration came into power on the back of promises of transparency and better engagement, yet the depot interest group, which I've only just heard of, was not held in public. I feel that if done well, redeveloping the depot could be an exciting, even inspirational project that provides something of real value. Please involve local people fully in shaping this significant piece of their neighbourhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Allen. I now call on Geoff Wright to unmute his microphone and put his camera on and address
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but we can't see you. Oh, we can see you now. We can see you now.
Well, you can now, can you?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm suffering here from having a name beginning with W, because I've been last in the queue, and I'm not sure I'm going to say anything new, but it won't harm, I think, to hear some of the things again. Right, I'm Geoff Wright, and I'm a resident of Quarry Road and St Giles Hill, and I have a fine view of the depot site. I was a member of the Bar End Forum and its informal successors, and prior to that was one of several local residents who campaigned to get the leisure centre away from KG5 and on Garrison Ground, and we were also the strong advocates of the master plan for the whole Bar End triangle, including the depot site, that was eventually agreed by the council and subsequently developed as the Bar End Framework by Stride Tregon. I am confident that I attended all engagement sessions on the leisure centre and design framework involving local residents right up to Covid lockdown, and I'm therefore happy to confirm that what has been said, that there has been, categorically, there was no consultation on the likely future of the depot site, despite us asking repeatedly for information, but this being firmly rejected by the council on grounds of commercial confidentiality. It is true that the design framework lists some parameters or constraints that would sensibly apply to any development on the developments on the depot site, but these were mainly suggestions made by Stride Tregon that was subsequently accepted by the council when they agreed the design framework. But by no imagination could these be described as red-line planning restrictions that would any way inhibit a developer from overturning them for his commercial advantage. Therefore, I believe that the proposal that you are seeking to approve today is based on a false premise, that local residents have been properly engaged and consulted. Simply, residents have had no opportunity to propose and discuss what they would like or not like to see on the site. Particularly, they've had no opportunity to explore whether the site could include some facility that would enhance their community, which is currently, by Winchester standards, badly off for community facilities that others already take for granted. I ask that you accept this omission of meaningful engagement and rectify it by initiating a fit-for-purpose residents engagement programme. The outcome from this should enable the definition of a sensible mix of facilities on the site that delivers a reasonable commercial return for the council and enhances the experience environment of the local community. At very least, the council needs such a model against which to benchmark any bids for purchase of the site that developers or others might make. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr Wright. As I said to previous speakers, and thank you all for making your contributions, we just have an item of business to deal with next on our list, but then we will be coming to the item on the depot, the depot paper. So please, you're welcome to stay on the call and hear our deliberations on that item when it comes up. So thank you very much. Can I now move to item number seven, which is leader and cabinet member announcements? I've just got one announcement to make before I open it up to the rest of Cabinet, and as some of you may be aware, that, and I'm really pleased to announce, that HM Courts and Tribunals have signed a licence with the city council to use the Guildhall as a nightingale court for the next nine months. This is really, really good news, as not only will it help our local economy and businesses by driving up footfall and bringing people back to the high street, but it also ensures that one of our very special buildings at the heart of Winchester is being made use of during these challenging times. Currently, the courts are in the process of setting up and preparing the rooms, and it's expected that they will be operating as a court very soon in November. So I'm sure that you'll all be very pleased to hear that. Councillor Porter, I think you've got an announcement to make.
I have, thank you. Thank you, leader. We're very sorry to hear about the fire at Newlands, at the play area. It is a Winchester City Council owned play area, and we will be doing work as quickly as absolutely possible to make sure that the children in that area have a play area restored again. It's a real shame that it's happened just before half term and the children won't be able to use it, but I hope they'll use the green space around it, which is very, very good and very interesting. But the player, I'm afraid, will be out of action for a little while until it's mended again. And I just urge everybody that might have any information that could lead to sorting out exactly who did that terrible thing to come forward. Thank you very much, Chairman. The second one I wanted to raise is a little bit of happier news, that the EV charging points, the groundwork is starting, and so we hope to have those in before Christmas, and we're looking forward to that very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further announcements? I see that councillor Brooke, you have your name, your hand up.
Yes, Leader.
Oh, sorry. Do you want me to wait till after councillor Todd? It was in response to councillor.
I think so. We don't normally have an interaction at this point, it's just normally the announcements. But I know that you've been involved with the playground and it, go ahead now.
I just wanted to say that the children responsible have owned up. They have confessed to what they've done, and that's been reported to the police. And the mother of the, one of the children has said that she's taken all of her daughter's savers and would like to donate them to the council to pay for the reconstruction. So I just wanted to give that back to you.
Thank you, councillor.
Councillor Brooke and I will talk afterwards, but I think that's very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Brooke, for that contribution. Councillor Todd?
Yes, Leader, we have some good news on the cost of parking. Council officers have negotiated a new contract for mobile payments, which will allow us to scrap the 30p so-called convenience charge that mobile phone users, app users have been having to pay extra, which we inherited from the previous administration. For perspective, this means that people using mobiles to pay for parking in our central and park and walk car parks will actually be paying the same or less than they were before. It will take a few weeks to implement. We need to change overall signs, for example, but overall, this is good news. It will mean that we have only one app for parking across the whole city and park and ride. It is, of course, the most Covid safe form of payment. It's more convenient because people don't need to traipse through a car park to find a machine, and most of all, it will save money for residents and visitors who want to use their mobile to pay to park.
Thank you very much, councillor Todd. I don't believe we have any further announcements, but do pipe up if I'm wrong. No, I think that is all. Okay, so we now move to the main, one of the main items of business, and it is cab three two six eight, the Bar End depot site future, and it's on pages hundred and fifteen to hundred and sixty-two of the agenda pack. This is currently item twelve on the agenda, but I've moved it up to item number eight as it, as there are so many members of the public and councillors who wish to speak on this item. So could I please call on councillor Lerni to introduce the paper? And could I also just draw members of Cabinet to the supplementary agenda, which is the report from the depot insight group? So councillor Lerni.
Thank you, Leader. As has been recognised by several speakers, the council is in a difficult financial position, which not only arises from the Covid crisis, but also from the pre-existing nineteen million pound hole in the medium term financial strategy, which we inherited. The council's budget did already include the assumption of a capital receipt for this site in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Capital projects, including the building of the sports park, are leading to the council going to a net borrowing position on the general fund. But every million pounds we receive from capital disposals and use against that debt will reduce our costs by over forty thousand pounds a year, which has an obvious benefit to the services we are able to provide. However, despite that financial position, we're not looking at a fire sale here. While we want to be ready to proceed to market the site, we will be looking at the general market situation before doing so, and when evaluating offers for the site, we'll make the benefits proposals offered to the local community and the district a key consideration. Local authorities do have a legal duty to sell land for best consideration, which is broadly the market price. However, where the council considers it will help secure the promotion or improvement of the economic, social or environmental wellbeing of its area, we have the power to make those disposals at less than the market price, and Cabinet are very happy to make that financial compromise to achieve benefits for the community, which might include employment opportunities, community facilities, affordable housing, open space, environmental enhancements, or indeed a shop. As part of the marketing, we are making clear the planning constraints on the site. The design framework sets out, for example, the maximum height of buildings, the need for a buffer to neighbouring properties, and the requirement for use of the site to generate low amounts of vehicular traffic. All of these will protect the interests of neighbours. However, I do, but it's disappointing that local residents don't feel that the engagement work done by the previous administration was adequate, or that the protections there, there are sufficient, and will definitely need to have a look at that. I fully understand the concerns that have been raised by the local community for not being presented with proposals for the site for consultation, and this has also been raised by the depot insight group, which was set up to inform Cabinet in this matter. But as the Dig Group also said, a detailed scheme for it to be meaningful. And while we and others might draw up concept plans, although that in itself is a significant cost, without going to market to see what comes forward from prospective developers, we have no idea what they might look like, or even the range of uses that might be there. We don't want to cut off good ideas in advance simply because we haven't thought of them yet. The proposal for a community trust, development trust, is one such idea that is very much to be welcomed, and I look forward to a full proposal coming forward from either Mr Gottlieb's group, or indeed any other local consortium that might come forward. The insight group also recommended that prospective developers be given as much information about the site as possible, and the recommendations include the budget needed to do those investigations. This information will take some time to gather, and the site will not be marketed until at the very earliest six months' time, almost certainly longer than that. This time will give the opportunity to reach out to the community and to prospective developers. This is not a straightforward site, and the council is not in a position where it has either the financial or the staff resource to develop the site itself, particularly given the projects we are working on elsewhere, including central Winchester regeneration. Without a sale, what could be a productive site offering benefits for the city and the local community will lie derelict for some years to come. Thank you, Leader, and I'm happy to take any questions and listen to member comments.
Thank you very much, councillor Lerni. Yes, I think this is a good opportunity now to call on the councillors who have requested to speak at this point, and the first one is councillor Liz Hutchison. Could I ask you to unmute your microphone and put your camera on?
Yes. Thank you very much indeed for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. Basically, I thank you very much for what I wanted to say, has in fact been said by members of the community and also by Kelsey Lerni, and I very much appreciate that. It's clear to me that we've been trying for a very long time in this area to get a holistic approach to how the area as a whole should work, and that was something that we worked at with the previous administration, but it never quite actually happened. In looking at the papers being presented, it is clear that nothing has actually been decided at this stage, so there is the opportunity to look at these different options. And I would welcome the opportunity, as suggested this, that we should have some form of workshop led by people who actually understand the different options, so that we can actually really work out how best to begin to go forward with this particular site. It's hugely important. It's hugely important to the people who live nearby. It's the entrance to Winchester, and to get it to be good and to be right is very, very significant at this moment in time. It's not a coincidence, in a way, that it's actually been coming forward at the same time as the Voltec site and the Goodchad site, all of which contribute to that area. And indeed, the area as a whole, particularly when you look at the industrial units to the south west, is badly in need of some sort of shaping, and certainly within the context of an overall plan, we could really bake something off the whole area. And I hope that this is actually the beginning of a more constructive discussion as to how we can go forward. Thank you very much indeed, and thank you for the very good remarks that have been made by so many people just now.
Thank you very much, councillor Hutchison. I now call on councillor Laming.
Yeah. Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, yes.
Not got my normal trick of making out. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. As you're aware, I've been involved in the leisure centre since its inception. The reason it was located at Bar End was that centres located next to Main Transport Route increase the number of visitors that make the centre viable. The other main concern was that it would help to regenerate this part of the city. The depot site is integral to this aim, and the business case for the centre falls down without the health, the provision of healthcare, as that is a major part of the hydrotherapy part. The depot site really needs to work in conjunction with the centre, and the centre needs to work in conjunction with that depot site. It is important. Residents have accepted all this and have given their input into what they'd like to see on the site and how various options would affect them. If we sell the site, we need assurances on how this can be achieved and how, sorry, and as we have seen in other developments, once the developer is in charge, the design changes as they claim viability does not work, and that is a very important consideration. I really appreciate that the council is in a bad financial situation and needs funds. That is due, as we all know, to the virus, but is also due to previous Conservative administrations who have failed to utilise the city's assets over a long period of time. This site has been on the market for over ten years, thus creating the negative revenue stream, and this is just one of many. This site has its drawbacks with limited access, height restrictions, et cetera. Would it not be better for the council to develop it? Or the, as councillor, as Kim Gottlieb suggests with the residents, doing it that way? With the council's ability to borrow money at better rates than a developer, surely we should be able to do this and create a long term revenue stream. It is a real pity that previous council leaders, who like to be known as entrepreneurs, have failed this city by not maximising the city's assets, and in particular, the one we're talking about at the moment. What can you tell us about what you consider to be the proper way of developing it? Because we need to know that, and Winchester does expect this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Laming. I now call on councillor Lumby. You're there, right?
Sorry, I've just the usual problem of finding the right buttons. Give me a good back. Thank you, Leader, and thank you for the opportunity to address Cabinet today. Thank you also for the opportunity to be a part of the depot insight group. The principle behind that, as I understood it, was for members of the council to do a deeper dive into options for this site and to consult where appropriate with local residents. As someone with around fifty, sorry, thirty years, God, I wish my life away, thirty years experience of the development industry, I hope I could play my part, it feels like fifty years. It was great to have different members of the council working together on this. Before it started, I expressed a concern that a sale should not be rushed. Leader, you assured us this would not, I think this is exactly what is happening. Certainly, the group's proceedings were rushed through, and it was clear from the word go, the intention was simply to sell the site. To properly assess all the options for the site, we need access to proper valuation for different uses and to qualify professionals. That would allow us to assess potential uses and which would generate the best value. From there, we could consider whether a sale was the best idea, whether some form of development by the council would generate the best value. But we were not permitted to do this. Indeed, a report on values from a few years ago couldn't even be found. Without any ability to consider potential uses or values, there was nothing new to consult on, and so that will be pointless. So this has all been rather a waste of everyone's times, both officers and members. We produced a paper of our findings, agreed by all the members of the group except the Chair, but that was actually vetoed by councillor Prince. A so-called consensus document was produced by officers, the second version, which was presented to Cabinet today, but that in itself totally ignored comments made by myself and another group member. So it's actually not a consensus document at all, even a report from the group, it's something that's been sent through as some sort of window dressing exercise of no value. So this does really feel like a bit of an empty exercise to give the appearance of engaging with the community and looking at options while actually rushing headlong on with the predetermined intention to sell. The only benefit I see from the group is that there is now a recommendation to get advice on the potential value of different uses, but this is being done after the decision has been taken to sell. This should be done first, so the best way of selling or developing the site can be ascertained. I would recommend that this process is put on hold until that has been carried out. I'm also really worried about the rush to sell. It feels like a panic reaction when we should be acting in a measured way, getting the best price for the council and the district. And when I say the district, I mean the district as a, as a whole. Of course, the local community should have a view, and I have no problem with a community group bidding or acquiring the site, provided they have the price. And indeed, is it not indicative that this is being sold too early, and that there are other options, that a community group should be seeking to acquire the site at all? But let me emphasise that full price point again. This is an asset belonging to the whole district. It belongs as much to the residents of the upper Meon Valley as those adjoining the site. So any sale must be at full value, not sold cheaply to pander to any particular group or worthy cause. To avoid that, we've been doing this in a measured way with proper consideration of options, getting the best price reasonably attainable, not flogging it off cheaply to appease local residents. Finally, if we are to sell, then we should consider what protections are needed for the local community and for our adjoining leisure centre, and how we enforce these. We've been thinking about these now and making them very clear to any bidders, not chucking something half bait in at the last minute. Please, could this be looked at as part of the preparation for sale process? In conclusion, I'm very happy to work with other councillors and our wonderful officers to seek the best outcome for our assets and the council. But please, in future, let's do these exercises where they are real rather than the window dressing. I do fear that this is a fire sale, carried out in a panic, when a more measured process could bring about a better outcome and more proceeds to the residents of our whole district. Thank you. The off button.
Thank you very much, councillor Lumby. Councillor Lerni, I don't know whether you want to come back on any of the contribute, any of the points raised and the contributions made earlier by members of the public. There are quite a few bits and pieces there on questions.
Thank you, Leader. I think I actually dealt with most of them within my original presentation. I would like to reassure councillor Lumby that I did read, that I did indeed read his comments, as well as councillor Williams's comments before coming to the meeting today. I would also point out that I actually started looking at the sale of this site when I was leader, which was in twenty ten. The previous administration had eight years to do all this, and yet now they just want to, you know, dither around and delay the process further. We are not committing to putting the house, putting the house, putting this site on the market tomorrow, or even next year if the conditions aren't right. This definitely isn't a fire sale, and we're going to be taking some. And we're going to be taking some time to do the appropriate investigations before doing that. But I think it's useful to set a marker in the sand around the, the council is not in a position to develop this site itself. And I think it's important that we actually do move forward and make some decisions on this. I would welcome any contributions that officers might want to make at this point if I've missed anything.
Officers, have you any comments to make? Yes, Mr Bradfield.
Sorry, thank, thank you, leader. Chas Bradfield, strategic director of place. I think, I think councillor Lerni has really summed this up, I suppose, just to reinforce, you know, that there's opportunities for consultation on detailed schemes, once detailed schemes emerge from the marketing process. Thank you, leader.
Thank you very much. Mr Coe, have you anything to add?
I don't think I can add anything to councillor Lerni's statements. Happy to take questions though, if there are any.
Okay, thank you very much. Members of Cabinet, have you any questions on the report? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, leader. Yes, we've heard from lots of residents about the lack of consultation. I'm just looking at page 123, which gives the timetable for marketing and disposal. In there, there's one update Highcliff Forum on October 2020. I was just wondering if we could add in other sort of discussions with the Highcliff Forum and other residents groups into that timetable to show that it's just not the one, one update we will be giving.
I'm sure we can look at, at doing that once we're, because obviously that timetable is, is already slightly out of, out of kilter anyway, because we are already almost through October. So, and as councillor Lerni said, this, this is definitely not a fire sale. This is just doing some preparation, preparatory work around the site before any marketing exercise is undertaken. So I'm sure we can look at that. Okay, yeah, councillor Lerni.
Yes, thank you, leader. Yes, I mean, this is designed to set a clear direction of travel, but we're very happy to put in more engagement events into the, into this period as we go forward. So very happy to commit to that, councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much.
Any further, any further comments or questions from Cabinet members? Councillor Murphy, you've raised your hand again. Is this in debate? Okay, right, okay.
It's just, thank all our speakers for coming along today. You know, I've been long aware of their concerns, and that was why at the Business and Housing Policy Committee, I asked for the Depot Insight Group to be set up. You know, one of the feedback from that group has been that we should keep residents informed, and that's what I intend to carry on doing. And it also highlights the consideration that we will be looking at residents' concerns, not just the best price. So I'm grateful to councillor Lerni for her reassurance on that. So yes, I think this paper is good. And as long as other colleagues, I sort of look forward to seeing what the Community Development Trust comes up with, because I think that could be a really exciting proposal, and I would love to see it work. So yes, I really look forward to seeing what they come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Any further debate amongst Cabinet members? Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, leader. I would again like to thank all the people that have contributed today to the discussion on this paper. And I'm very much heartened by the fact that there is, the Community Development Trust idea has come forward. I'm also heartened by the fact that councillor Lerni has confirmed that it will take at least six months to put all the work in place before we'll be able to see any kind of proposals on the site, which will give hopefully the Community Development Trust the time they need to come up with a credible proposal themselves. I am concerned that residents feel very strongly that they haven't been consulted fully. So I'm also pleased with the determination by Cabinet to make sure that additional consultation and is done with residents as we go forward. I would echo the need, and I know we accept this need, that the site shouldn't be sold at a price which doesn't reflect its value, just because we have a hole in the, our coffers at the moment. And I would, I would like to notice the fact that we will be looking at getting the best price. And if it's not appropriate to sell, then the sale won't be made. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ferguson. Any further comments from members of the Cabinet? Can we then move to the recommendations, which are on page 115? There are five recommendations there, and approve the marketing of the Bar End depot site for, for disposal at best consideration. That is a really important point. So it's not necessarily best price, it's best consideration and best fit. Approve the planning guidance. Delegate authority to the strategic director of place in consultation with a cabinet member of housing and asset management to take all appropriate action to initiate and complete the marketing of the Bar End depot site with appropriate draft contractual terms to evaluate the bids received and to make recommendation for final disposal to a future cabinet for decision. Approve a budget of £20,000 for associated marketing, site survey and section 123 valuation expenses. And finally, approve a budget of £10,000 for development rates or valuations to better inform potential site value and the target market of developers. Those are the recommendations. We will also be looking at engagement with the local community. Just want to reassure everybody on that. But Cabinet, are we, are we content to agree the recommendations as set out on page 115 on the agenda pack?
Agreed. Agreed.
Agreed.
Agreed, everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. We, we now move on to the order paper as set out. Agenda, formally agenda itemate, response to the government paper on Form Cab 3262. And I call on councillor Porter to introduce the report, please.
Thank you very much, leader. And before I start, I just want to say thank you to all the officers involved in this particular response. Adrian Fox and Simon Finch in particular, but pretty much every member of the forward planning team has been involved in this. And it's a long Cabinet paper with its appendix of responses to the government consultation. Our planning team has briefed on the impact of the changes at Local Plan Advisory Group with councillors and with parish councils and with Cabinet too, of course. I've listened to our officers and attended outside seminars, listened to the views of other Hampshire councils, including Hampshire County Council and district neighbours. Members from both parties have joined meetings too. And I'd just say thank you to councillor Lumby, who I've seen on many of those, and councillor Evans for taking such a strong interest. And councillor Evans is of course chairman of our planning committee, and so this has huge implications for the planning committee. The White Paper has good and bad proposals within it, and we all acknowledge that the current programme of work that it takes to produce a local plan takes too long to deliver, and that beauty is not the centre of planning as it stands now. But I would add healthy, beauty is not importantly just in the eye of the beholder, but in the eyes of the people who live and work there too. There were omissions in the paper which we addressed in our response, the lens of climate change through which our plan will be driven, the role of the S106 to deliver vital infrastructure before communities are developed, not after, the role of good active travel links in sustainability. The granting of planning permission doesn't necessarily bring about the delivery of homes. Only last night at a public meeting, Carla stated that they're selling six houses, not a week, but a month. The need for gypsy and traveller provision to cover the needs of the whole community. The challenge of working with the community is to decide which areas were growth, renew and protect in a relatively short timeframe. And lastly, the need for enhanced digital access to ensure equity for all of our citizens. At LPAG, Local Planning Advisory Group, it was a cross party decision to request that Winchester is a pilot authority for the new scheme. Our invitation to MPs to hear our views has not yet been taken up, which is a shame, but I will send a copy of this report to them if it's passed today. Conscious that making a formal response is often considered a daunting task, suggestions and actions from all groups have been included in this response where possible. There may be answers to which you think should have been more added or taken away. But if the truth to be told, it will be the accumulation of responses from right across the country that will affect the outcome and what the local planning process will look like when it comes to legislation in 2022. And recommendation three explains how we'll be seeking more detailed advice from MHCLG on how we go forward, as we're already part, we're partway through. For Winchester, the combination of the new algorithm to calculate housing need in the previous paper and the new planning proposal proposed in this paper has given us cause to rethink the whole programme of ongoing work to produce a local plan which will continue to be relevant to the people it will serve and to the council's plan. That is, looking at planning healthy communities through the lens of much lower with greater biodiversity, healthy homes and greater equity for our citizens and their families. I anticipate I'll be coming back to LPAG and then with the Cabinet with that new timetable before the end of this year. But meanwhile, I recommend this paper to Cabinet.
Thank you very much, councillor Porter. I've got two councillors who would like to speak on this item, and the first one is councillor Hutchison.
Thank you very much indeed for giving me the opportunity to say a few words again. And I just really wanted to confirm that very much support what the council has put forward in terms of its response to the public consultation. And as Jackie has very well put, I think that almost universally, as far as I can see, having also attended a number of these workshops and so forth on the White Paper, there is a sense that change is needed and that this, the intent behind some of the changes proposed is excellent. But so far, there is very, very little detail and particularly detail on the issues that has been highlighted in the paper from WCC. The, I just wanted to mention that in addition to what has been said from WCC, the town forum is also going to be, has prepared a response, which I hope complements that of WCC. It makes exactly the same points, but has a slightly different emphasis. And that really emphasis is looking much more at how you actually deal with nitty gritty and the fine grain of a different place. The White Paper is very much committed to spatial map based plans for places. And that is something that I think is very strongly supported, although the detail of it, as mentioned, hasn't yet been worked through in very much detail. In terms of Winchester, we are in a sense slightly ahead of the game. We are working at the moment on the vision, which is the first part of trying to prepare a plan for Winchester. And I think that this would be very much in line with what is being considered. And I hope that, and welcome the suggestion that Winchester is going to put itself forward as a pilot. But this element, I think, could be a particularly interesting part of that, and I hope that that will form part of the overall submission. Just wanted to add also that I think the, the paper as a whole is very much building based. But it's fair and talks about beauty. All of those things need much more detail. And in terms of place making, how the streets work, the transport, active transport and the landscape all work together with the buildings is crucial. And I think that's something that we could strengthen also. So basically, very much supportive, but hope we can strengthen that from the point of view of also the town forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Hutchison. I now call on councillor Horrell, please.
Good morning, Chair, and thank you for allowing me to address Cabinet today. And may I echo councillor Porter's comments and say a very big thank you and well done to officers for the work they've done in preparing the document for today, both Cab 3262 and the appendix, which obviously covers the council's response to the consultation. They were all really helpful and very thorough. And thank you to councillor Porter for the opportunity to input to date through various committees to the content of the Winchester City Council response. We know that this paper alongside the response prepared for the government's consultation on the methodology for calculating housing require, housing requirements are both working alongside each other. And I think in essence, the feeling is that reform to the planning system is welcomed. I heard that from many of our planning officers in a recent meeting. And the desire to be quicker, more agile and more technology focused are all supported. But as always, as councillor Hutchison has just said, the devil is in the detail. I know our response must be submitted by the end of the month, so I've addressed my comments this morning to the content specifically of appendix one. And I think if we can, we must emphasise the need to address the issues of employment development in the district. We touch on it in several responses, but our area is not just about housing, it's where people work, and that is also key. And we need to address this as it has a significant impact, particularly on our infrastructure as we experience pre Covid. So if we can highlight that in any greater sense, I would welcome that. I absolutely support the initiative for sub areas to be created for self build and community led housing. And I thought we could emphasise that in our question five response. It is in the proposal, but we don't particularly touch on it in our reply. And I also welcome the idea of conservation areas and open spaces defined as protected. And I know that we're not necessarily completely supportive of all of the definitions. But again, I thought that was something that we could pull out and be supportive of. I personally don't support the recommendation in seven B to form a new larger scale strategic planning group. And I note that in the paper, we talk about at least the opportunity for informal dialogue. And I think that might be a better way to go rather than another layer of complication. I absolutely support the concerns in Q8A, read the methodology of calculating housing numbers. And I think we must, as recommended actually in your Cabinet paper, seek a meeting with the government or the MHCLG to put our case as best we can. I welcome the suggestion that we put ourselves forward as a pilot. And as councillor Porter said, I think that has universal appeal. But I think we need to recommend in our question 12 response, the need that a first time round on producing a plan is likely to take slightly more time than subsequent iterations, and whether there should be a phasing for the first version of the plan versus subsequent ones. You've accurately reflected infrastructure and the risk of this being delivered too late in the process. And it's a real concern, I think, that we would want to emphasise in questions 14, 15 and 22. And the issue of multiple land ownership on larger development sites and the complexity this brings is a real concern. I wondered whether we had evidence from our own MDAs where we could include specific numbers, excuse me, here to support our point of view. And the issue of build out rate and the lack of responsibility on developers is well made. And I think the idea of penalties, costs, incentives in some way to ensure pressure is applied to those who can affect change is important. And that lag in levy payments upon occupation should be opposed in a more realistic approach recommended. We mentioned in question 21, the issue of high speed broadband as a norm. But I think that should just be a fundamental, one of those key utility deliverables that all of us in this area are now seeking as a normal expectation. And I think your issue of gypsy and traveller community, the particular issue for our district not being mentioned, and the lack of IT facilities for some residents in question 20. 26, again is important. We've not been asked to comment, but I would suggest that we add that we're in support of proposal 24 to strengthen enforcement powers and sanctions, another key thing for our area. This paper does highlight the need for a local action plan and I know that you are working towards that, but I think it is clear that we now need to move forward on that so that everyone in the district knows our intentions. Thank you Chair for allowing me to speak this morning.
Thank you councillor Horrell and thank you for your contribution and also to councillor Hutchison for the contribution that she made too. Members of Cabinet, have you any questions on the paper? No, I'm not hearing any. Okay, any debate? Councillor Porter, have you? You're muted.
No, thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to councillor Horrell and councillor Hutchison. And I think probably what that does show is that the, and I have read through the Winchester City Council, the Winchester Town Forum's draft response, and it's incredibly similar. And I have to say that people from all parties right across the country appear to be saying very similar things. And so I do hope that all of our responses put together will show government that there are some very good ideas in this paper and there's also some work that needs to be done. As councillor Hutchison said, I'm really pleased that we have already started on the vision in a digital form. I think it's really given a chance to get ahead of the curve. I don't necessarily agree about trying to slow down the process for the first time. I think we can do a lot of work in preparation for when they make the starting gun in 2022. But I do think that we have tried to point out that employment and local employment and employment for all ranges, not right from the very smallest job to the very most senior job, are equally vital in the running of our communities. And we need to make sure that that's part of our plan. So I think that's something that councillor Ferguson holds me to account for all the time and quite rightly. So we do need to make sure that our plan includes all of those matters. And as I said, I think that the responses from everybody right across the country will reflect almost the same points.
Thank you very much councillor Porter. I've got two Cabinet members who wish to speak and the first up is councillor Todd, then followed by councillor Ferguson. So councillor Todd, please.
Yes, I'd just like to thank officers and councillor Porter for taking a robust line on the proposals. You know, I have particular interest in making sure that there's support for walking and cycling and good infrastructure and the proposals on how infrastructure will be funded, the lack of linkage to development sites, the lack of a clear plan for how off-site development will work of infrastructure, of cross-border development of infrastructure is something that it's important to highlight because as councillor Hutchison said, if we don't have the right infrastructure around the buildings, places are beautiful not just because of the buildings, but also how those beautifuls, how those places are organised. You know, the Guildhall is a stunning building, but if it was on a, stuck inside a motorway, it would be a less stunning building. It's a stunning building because of its setting, because of the Broadway in front of it and because of the way it connects up with the rest of the city. And we need to make sure that those considerations are properly taken into account. As we know, take a local example, Kingsbarton, actually getting the connectivity of that site with the bits that aren't Kingsbarton and aren't owned by the developer is absolutely critically important. And whatever system of planning we end up with, it's absolutely essential that, if anything, we come up with a better system than the one we have and certainly not a less well-defined, less specific system, which is what the current proposals outline. So I'm strongly supportive of what we're saying here.
Thank you councillor Todd. Councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, I would also like to thank councillor Porter and officers for all the work that they've done on this and also for the depth of consultation and communication that they've had with members throughout the whole process. I feel very strongly, there's a dangerous change of emphasis in this white paper in that it seems to redesign the planning system entirely around the objective to deliver house building rather than to deliver sustainable development in the round, to consider how people will work, live and move around there from their homes. There is absolute minimal reference to planning for employment or transport, which runs counter to the need to provide homes where there are also jobs and to address the climate emergency. Therefore, I am very pleased that this paper makes these points robustly and it emphasises the fact that new development should also consider local employment needs. And for the development to be sustainable, to be linked to and to include sustainable transport options and not simply to lead to additional car usage, as people have no option but to travel by car to get to work. So I'm really pleased we're making these points and I just want us to keep on making them as I'm sure that many will be making them in their responses to the white paper. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. And I also have councillor Murphy.
Thank you Leader. I think this report shows just how important it is to be ambitious on carbon neutrality targets. If the government had set their carbon neutrality target earlier, then we wouldn't have had quite so many issues with the white papers we have. So I really support this paper in challenging, you know, all this local plan policies to make our, to hit our targets. And I also agree with this report that we need much more reference to achieving biodiversity net gain and to having green infrastructure networks. So thank you to councillor Porter and staff and I really support this paper.
Thank you very much councillor Murphy. Councillor Horrell, you've got your hand up. I don't know whether that's a mistake. Oh, okay. You put it down again. Right. Okay, no, that's fine, that's fine. If there are no other contributions from members of Cabinet, I'd like to move to the recommendations, please, which are on page 18 of the agenda pack. We've all read them and I hope we are now able to agree them. Are we agreed Cabinet?
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. That item is agreed. We now move to item number nine, which is the Community Infrastructure Levy Update, CAB3257. And councillor Porter is going to introduce this paper.
Yeah, thank you. And Mr Corcoran, we will address your comments in the piece following the introduction and when we get back to the offices. And I'll ask Simon Finch to just elucidate on that. I do know about it, but I know he has spoken specifically to you. So this is the Community Infrastructure Paper, CAB3257. It's based on the approval of the three-year rolling programme, which is recommendation one. And the decision will be of great interest to the councils who will benefit, the parish councils and the organisations who will benefit is in recommendation two. This funding has been allocated to the parishes and community groups to deliver to the items that are on the Regulation 123 list. Winchester City Council is working in partnership with those communities who have their own SIL to deliver projects which would otherwise be unaffordable. Those key elements include supporting a growing population with community infrastructure, which has to be open to everyone, improve opportunities to walk, cycle or take public transport, develop new play opportunities for a growing community and road safety measures. At this year's SIL board, which is also attended by councillor Prince, we reviewed projects for which money has been allocated last year. We were pleasing, it was pleasing to note that despite COVID-19, most of the projects were actually complete or near to complete. But it was disappointing to see that projects where Hampshire County Council is the lead partner had not even started on the ground. And for that reason, we have included recommendation, recommendation eight on this paper. The projects submitted are measured against feasibility, full funding availability and deliverability. We expect to see projects come forward that are well-informed about the benefit they'll offer to the community and well-advanced in the planning. We have a number of projects in the pipeline that are dependent on delivery by developers. And recommendation five agrees release of that capital previously allocated for the Bishopswaltham cycleway link or cycle and footway link. Unsuccessful projects are always advised whether they would benefit from a rethink to apply again. And one of them has been one of those. The total value of the projects which satisfied the criteria we set was 414K. They're listed in recommendation two. Recommendation three allows us to agree all of the projects which fulfil the criteria by adding a little bit more money to this year's funding. This has been such a successful programme to deliver infrastructure to growing communities across the district. Recommendation six is drawing down SIL developer funding into this budget to allow community bidding process to continue in future years. Recommendation four is using the Winchester City Council's Winchester allocation against the Winchester Movement Strategy Plans. In recommendation, I'm recommending a full review of the SIL in early 2021 to align the outcomes of the projects to the council's plan and to move on with the Winchester's movement strategy. It's going to cost us quite a lot of money. In future, Winchester City Council will report SIL expenditure within the IFS, the Infrastructure Funding Statement, which includes S1062. So it's quite a complicated report, but it has essentially, the most important point is that it's giving money to the parishes and community groups who importantly get on and deliver the job in places where it's easier to do so. And I recommend this paper to you.
Thank you very much councillor Porter. I have one councillor who wishes to speak on this item, councillor Brooke.
Thank you Chair and for allowing me to speak. I won't be on camera because I'm using one machine, so reading from my notes means that the camera piece doesn't work. So apologies in advance for that. I'm delighted to see this paper before us today as it is such a vital funding for many projects and is very encouraging to see the areas of the district that are benefiting from this SIL. I'd like to thank the officers for their hard work, as I know a lot goes into this and in particular Simon Finch, who's championed improving the allocations of SIL funding. And despite this being a challenging topic in many ways. I'd like to ask the portfolio whether we've engaged with the projects that have not yet come forward, as mentioned in this paper, to identify whether there's anything we could do to help or advise in order to progress them. And it's always disappointing when these well-thought-out projects that would be clearly beneficial to our residents aren't coming forward. So I wondered if there's something that if the portfolio holder hasn't done, she could instigate for the residents who would benefit so much from these previously allocated projects. I'm pleased to see how well the new bidding system that was implemented during my time as portfolio holder, how successful that's been in allocating the funds to the projects that so desperately need it. I was disappointed though to hear this morning of the lack of engagement at Twyford Parish Council. And I would be keen to understand how we engage with Twyford Parish Council going forwards and to see how we might be able to support and engage with that project more. Recommendation seven, I found it unusual because it requests for a review of unallocated funds, but then lists a whole host of thoughts on which it implies that they might put these funds towards, which sort of implies that this review has already been well in progress. So I was a little confused by that, but overall, I'm really pleased to see this paper. I'm really pleased to see this money being spent and that the new process of allocating those funds has successfully completed its task that was potentially over three years and has managed to find those projects within two. So well done to all involved. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning.
Thank you very much councillor Brooke. Members of Cabinet, do you have any questions on the paper? I know councillor Porter will want to respond to some of the comments made by councillor Brooke. No questions yet, so councillor Porter.
Yes, thank you. And I was pleased when that paper came through under the previous administration because I've been pressing for it as well. We could see that there were many parishes who had small SIL allocations who would really benefit from improved opportunity to link into the SIL funding and also communities who didn't receive SIL but were suffering the outcomes of greater developments nearby. So I too was very pleased to see that paper come forward. And it is a testimony to the parishes who are bringing forward and community groups who are bringing forward plans, that actually they are well-developed and so they are ready to tick the box and go forward. And as you say, we reached the limit of our money within two years rather than three. So that's why we've recommended that this, we take on extra, a little bit extra money this year and go forward with a new budget so that we can go forward in the future. That inevitably means that we do set very clear criteria. We don't actually support plans where actually, in many cases, it's a maintenance issue or just an improvement because nothing has been done over time. This is about helping communities to make a real leap forward. And you'll notice that one of them is Denmead, where we've recommended a very large amount of money to really bring a mugger forward, a multi-use games area so that it can be used. With Twyford, a number of applications have been made over the years. And I think the lesson to learn from it is on both sides. One is that the community themselves need to explain absolutely in their applications which one needs to come first. And I don't think we've necessarily had that knowledge. And Mr Corcoran is right, we also have problems getting Hampshire County Council to the panel. We invite them every time and they haven't turned up so far. It would be really helpful if they did because the sort of comments that Mr Corcoran raised, we could actually deal with at that meeting. I'm also conscious, as a result of Twyford and some others, that some parishes have SDMPA, the South Wales National Park Authority, also providing their SIL. And I think that we could make a revision to the board that makes that decision and include the South Wales National Park to that too, because they might have a little bit more of an insight into what's going on. But Mr Finch has already committed to talking with Mr Corcoran and the parish council to make sure that we're flexible with the arrangements for that parish. We're very conscious of the flooding that happens there and we need to be able to sort that out with him. So Mr Corcoran, if you will accept this also as your response, the response to you, I know that Simon's already talked to you about it, talked how we can be constructive about the money in which has already been allocated to Twyford and make sure it gets to you in the right order for the right job.
Thank you very much councillor Porter. I know that Mr Finch, I believe, wishes to make a few comments. Who's in the room with us today?
Thank you Chair. Councillor Porter's actually just said a lot of what I was going to say. However, yeah, just doing, which is helpful, but I did have a long and constructive discussion with Mr Corcoran from Twyford on Monday. And I think it's safe to say it's probably one of the more complicated schemes we've had to deal with because it's interlinked with so many different things. So we had quite a long discussion about that and obviously without being able to give any definitive response about whether we can reallocate that money, I'd of course be happy to have the dialogue and would look at whether that was a possibility and to also talk in the aid of the National Park and Hampshire County Council, who are also involved, of course, in the flood alleviation scheme. So I think that would be really, it would say constructive discussion and we'd be more than happy to continue that dialogue to see whether or not, you know, there is a way that we can reallocate that money. Thank you Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr Finch. I think Mr Corcoran has got his hand up. We don't normally allow members of the public to interact, you know, in this way. I don't know whether you've got, as you've got your hand up, I'll allow you to come in now, but just for, can you make it very brief please?
Yes, yes, of course. No, I fully appreciate the complexity of this. I'm glad that Simon has taken that fully on board and councillor Porter too. I couldn't have asked for more as a recommendation as an outcome of this than your commitment to talk to us further about it. But please do bear in mind that we're not now in full control of the timescale and we're... the money does need to be in place or some commitment within three or four months. So that's the timescale that the parish council is up against in acting as ringmaster, as it effectively is for the county council, the city council and South Downs. And you're quite difficult to control, you're not cats quite, but thank you very much.
I fully appreciate that, Mr Corcoran. And I appreciate the need to try and get everybody in the room and agree the same timetable. We will do that with you with pleasure.
Thank you, thank you very much. Glad to hear that we're not pets. Have we, I think we've probably gone through questions. Any debate? Or can we move straight to the recommendations? Recommendations? They are on page 65 and 66 of the Agenda Pack. I'm not going to read them because they're quite lengthy. Cabinet, are we agreed with the recommendations for us?
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for everyone who's made a contribution to that item. I'd now like to move on to item 10 on our agenda, which is Vaultex site, creation of a decked park and ride car park. And in so doing, just like to point out, we are just past 11 o'clock. So technically, we have half an hour of the meeting to go, but we've actually got quite a lot of important items still to come on this agenda. So I suspect that we will have to run over, that's just to make everyone aware. But if you could be aware of the time and just perhaps curtail your comments, then that would help. So councillor Todd, to introduce this paper, please.
Thank you, Leader. As you know, the council moved quickly and efficiently to secure funding for this project, the Vaultex Park and Ride project. And I'd like once again to pay tribute to officers for securing the 5.6 million that we have managed to achieve from the LEP for this programme. Because without that, we couldn't be building a car park of this capacity and quality. The paper outlines the next steps we need to take in order to move ahead quickly and efficiently to deliver this project, including the appointment of Wilmore Dixon under the Procurement Hub major projects framework to drive it through. As a reminder, the work on the City of Winchester Movement Strategy shows we need more park and ride capacity, not just in this area and also other parts of the city as well, although that's being handled separately. This project will help deliver that and as a result also help with our climate change goals, support the leisure centre as well, as well as providing extra parking to support the centre. We've had problems in the past with proposals and designs that haven't always been sensitive to context and setting. We've all seen at the station what happens if you build a steel frame car park and you don't take that into account. So we are proposing an increase in the potential budget funded by borrowing in order to secure that. I would stress that we're not automatically assuming that we'll be spending it all. We're also looking at other options that might enable us to achieve the objective of a context sensitive approach and design more cost effectively, but we do need to clarify this funding in order to proceed at pace. The timings on this are tight. The building needs to be finished by the end of January 2022. This is achievable, but it does mean that we need to keep moving. And essentially, that's what this paper enables. So I don't know if people have any questions, but I would ask Cabinet to support this paper so that the team can keep moving ahead quickly with the proposed scheme.
Thank you very much, councillor Todd. I should also have asked that, of course, we've got an exempt appendix to this report. So, and councillor Lumby has asked to speak on the exempt appendix, which means that we will have to take that, take that item and discuss that separately. But could I now call on councillor Miller, who wishes to address us? Oh, right, councillor Miller first, and then I see councillor Lumby has his hand up. So councillor Miller, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. I welcome this paper. I'm glad to see the project moving to a conclusion. The site was acquired by the previous Conservative administration to provide further car parking to support the movement strategy and help the economy of the city, as well as help the leisure centre. So I fully support this paper. Please get on with it. I would like to thank the State Department for their hard work on acquiring it and work done today, and particularly the officers also securing the finance. So yes, I fully support this paper and I very much welcome it. And thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Miller, particularly for keeping your comments so brief and thank you for your support. Councillor Lumby, you raised your hand, or was that by accident?
No, that was deliberate on this occasion. Leader, if you would rather, I have to look to my comments I was going to make in exempt. I think I can make those now, if you would, if that would assist in avoiding going into exempt and speeding matters along. But I'm happy to be taken offline, also well for everybody else, if he would rather go that way. But in this, in this for speed, should I just have a quick go now rather than?
Yes, yes, that would be helpful, actually. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I have really very, very few comments to make. First was, I actually really question why this paper is exempt at all. I don't think there's anything in it that we will be anything other than very pleased to have out in the public domain. So I query in the question of sort of transparency, whether we actually need to having this exempt or whether we should actually have it out in the open. And probably not to be answered now, but I noticed that there is within it, the whole construction cost is a single figure. I won't say what it is because it's exempt. There's no breakdown of what is comprised within that. And generally, on a development appraisal, you would have a whole host of other costs, like design costs and things and employers' agents and all sorts of things like that set out as well. I was going to seek reassurance that those were all included, question why they were not broken down and just understand that better because clearly if they have just been left out, then that is a rather less good situation because the figures will all be wrong. And finally, there doesn't appear to be contingency and is that contingency also within that global construction figure? That was all I had to ask. So thank you for letting me do that. You know, I've got questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Lumby. That's most helpful, actually. I always think it's better to not have to go into exempt and do everything openly. So that's great. Cabinet members, any questions? Councillor Murphy?
Oh, yes, thank you. Quick question is just what engagement have we had or will we have with Doman Road residents? And will there be any opportunity to do some planting to shield them from the new car park?
It's certainly the intention that ahead of any formal planning process, we will engage with Doman Road residents since they are the most nearby and affected. I think our, there is already a lot of screening and planting between Doman Road and this car park, but obviously the light impacts and how we might mitigate those will be something that we consider importantly. And that's something I've already raised to make sure that the treatment of the end facing Doman Road is mindful of that in any design decisions that are taken, particularly in terms of how the lighting is managed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from Cabinet members or can we move into debate? Any debate? No, okay. In that case, we move to the recommend, sorry, councillor Porter.
Yeah, just to say, I fully support this. It's an opportunity for people to park away from the city centre but to walk in. I think particularly in the last few months, we've all appreciated a walk as well as part of our daily lives and this is really good. And I'm afraid I'm the one that keeps saying the green aspect of this is going to be very important in this area where it can be, we do not want anything that looks as bad as the ones we've got at the station. So it's really heartening to hear councillor Todd reiterate how important the setting of this site is. It's not just a car park, it's a building to people around there. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further debate?
In terms of the specific questions that have been asked about the financial implications, and obviously you can be reassured, I'm sure officers may want to provide that reassurance directly that the costs have been fully considered. And certainly, although it is in a restricted paper, we'll have no issue with further sharing of details as we move through the project.
Thank you very much, councillor Todd. So I'd like to move to the recommendations on page 93 and 94, please, as well as obviously noting the exempt paper. Cabinet, are we in agreement?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. And thank you, everybody, for your contributions. That's brilliant. I'd now like to move on to item number 11, which is the Goods Shed, CAB 3267. And I'd like to call on councillor Lernie to introduce this report, please.
Thank you, Leader. Following the start on site of the Bishop's Waltham depot industrial development, I'm really pleased to be able to start the process of creating more high quality units for small businesses in the district. And we have considered this site for housing, but have assessed that the retention and increase of employment opportunities in the area is not only important, but it's a more appropriate use of this particular site. Finding premises is an issue for many businesses in the Winchester district and the push from owners to achieve residential values for sites is something we're having to resist hard and that may well be made more difficult by government planning changes in the future. The intention is that the council retains the freehold of this site and that this remain a revenue generating asset within the council portfolio. The proposal will also allow the retention and reuse of the old goods sheds, one of the few remnants of the Didcot, Newbury and Southampton railway, which is a subject on which I sadly know far too much. So I'm happy to give people more information if they require it. So I'm happy to take any questions, Chair, and listen to members' comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Lernie. Councillor Miller has indicated he wishes to speak on this item.
Thank you again, and I promise to keep it brief again. Yes, I fully support bringing this project forward. It was acquired with a view to having business units on it and unfortunately got slightly delayed due to a potential partnership deal that didn't come off. So I'm glad to see it moving forward. I again would like to thank the State Department for their hard work on this project. And thanks very much.
Thank you very much for your support, councillor Miller. Have we any questions? Councillor Porter, I see that you've got your hand up.
I probably need to declare a non prejudicial personal interest in the Didcot-Newbury railway line because I'm also a trustee of a charity that is developing the route north of Winchester. But actually, it is also, of course, south of Winchester on the viaduct. And I think it's a really important part of the plan that we think about the sense of history that this building brings along the way. But I think it's excellent idea to bring it into some sort of practical use. It looks a little bit sad as it sits now.
Thank you very much, councillor Porter. And I think councillor Todd, do you have your hand up? Or was that a mistake? Councillor Todd, yes?
Yes, but no, I also strongly support this at the moment. At the moment, it's being used opportunistically, believe it or not. It's where all the spare green bags are kept that are used currently for garden waste recycling. And it was also where we were storing all the communal glass bins that are currently being put into flats around the, around the district, but this is a much better use. Incidentally, I've seen from an email that some people were highlighted that there was a reference to Hampshire County Council in one of the earlier papers. And of course, just for clarification, I don't think it's a huge secret, I am a Hampshire County councillor as well as a city councillor, but it is a personal and not a prejudicial interest.
And that applies to me as well. Jackie Porter.
Thank you very much. I now have councillor Ferguson, I believe, who wishes to ask a question, followed by councillor Murphy.
Sorry, Leader, I thought we'd moved into debate. I can hold, I can hold off, it's not a question.
Well, first of all, any further questions? You've got your hand up still, I don't know whether that's a question or? No? No, okay. Well, we'll move into debate. So I'd like to call on councillor Ferguson first of all, followed by councillor Murphy. Sorry, I've probably got them the wrong way around now.
Thank you, Leader. I just wanted to speak in support of this paper. I'm fully supportive of it. I'm delighted that we are going to retain the Goods Shed and develop it to create some employment space. Supporting small businesses is a priority for us in the district. And the benefit of the Goods Shed is it's a sustainable location for employment, given its proximity to the city centre. But it's also a great opportunity for local businesses because it also has fantastic connectivity and being so close to the M3. And we have very little employment land in the city, Bornd and the Winall area are the two main areas. So I am really pleased that we are bringing forward this paper and I'm looking forward to actually seeing those business units up and running. I fully support it.
Thank you, thank you very much, councillor Ferguson. Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Leader. I'm too in support of this paper and I'm particularly pleased that we're going to try and make it into a permanent home for the boxing club because they really are a great community asset and I think we should be doing all we can to help them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If there are no further contributions, can we now move to the recommendations? Oh, councillor Lernie?
If I can just come back on that. Clearly, we've got, with, this is just the investigating stage, so it's good to start this off. And again, like councillor Ferguson, I am keen to see this move forward and I fully expect it to. I would say that the boxing club is something that we're looking to do and looking to find them a new home. And we hope to do this within this new development, but there's still some work to do before we get there.
Thank you very much. Can we now move to the recommendations on page 103? Are we agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you very much.
Agreed.
Thank you. That's brilliant. Okay, we now move to item number 13 on the agenda, which is CAB 3265, creating a new green economic development strategy on pages 163 to 176 of the Agenda Pack. Can I ask councillor Ferguson, please, to introduce the paper?
Thank you, thank you, Leader. I'm really pleased to be able to bring this paper before Cabinet today, as it sets aside a new approach to the creation of a new 10-year green economic development strategy for the district. This is a critical time for the council to be developing this new strategy. Not only will the strategy help us identify those steps we must take if we are to transition to a green, sustainable, low carbon, zero carbon economy, in line with our ambitious plans to make the district carbon neutral by 2030. But it's also important because it will help us to drive our economic recovery post COVID-19. But it's also important because it will help us to drive our economic recovery post Covid nineteen. We know that in response to Covid nineteen, many things have changed. Working practices have changed, the way businesses operate have changed. The demand for office space has and is changing. There've been changes in shopping habits, footfall on our high streets and the way that people move around. There's a real need to understand the impact of these changes on our existing economy. And to take the opportunity to springboard from these changes to build back better, but also to build back greener and to build importantly, economic resilience for the future. The new approach set out in this paper will both identify the scale of the task at hand. It will also generate a roadmap of practical steps that will allow us to make the transition that's needed. The transition to a greener, more technologically driven, creative economy. An economy where we can build on our current economic strengths, support business startups and business growth, and where we can create better, high quality jobs for all of our residents, particularly in the new green growth sectors. Importantly, the new approach that we've set out here will allow us to develop the strategy in partnership with our key stakeholders, businesses and residents across the district, building consensus and ownership of the strategy. Because that's vitally important. We fully recognise that if we are truly to build back better, to build back greener, this is something the council cannot achieve on its own. And I hope the Cabinet will support the recommendations made in the paper. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. I've got two councillors who have indicated they wish to speak on this item. And the first up is councillor Lumby.
Thank you, Leader. I'm just playing with the buttons again. Here we go. Thank you again, and thank you for the opportunity to speak again. I'm afraid it's grumpy Lumby again. When I saw the title of this paper, creating a new green economic development strategy, I will confess to being pretty excited. Hey, at last, here it is. And what a wait it's been. And whilst I think the first council after the May two thousand and nineteen elections, I asked councillor Weir, then portfolio holder for the local economy, in the battle between jobs and the environment, which would win? She gave a masterclass, as ever, in political arts and answering, saying she believed we could have both. Of course, I was sceptical, but I wanted to see the plan to do this. But sadly, nothing came. However, the Covid did and with it the three pronged recovery plan proposed by councillor Ferguson. The third prong was reimagine, a bit John Lennon for me, but an exciting prospect. We desperately need action to prepare for the post-Covid world, to bring new private sector jobs into Winchester, to retain our young people here and to be more than a sleepy tourist attraction. But sadly, we still wait for the reimagine plan as the administration dithers and delays its way from one inaction to another inactivity. Hence my excitement that finally the plan was ready. And my disappointment when I realised that this isn't the plan. In fact, there is still no plan. The council want to employ someone to write it for them. Crumbs, what has been happening? And the paper reveals more worrying stuff. Paragraph J on page one, six, eight talks about the ten year horizon to align with the twenty thirty district carbon neutrality target. It talks about the strategy needing to focus on year one. Leader, it's twenty twenty. Twenty thirty is ten years away. Eighteen months have already been wasted with no plan and apparently we need to focus on year one. We are here, we are here, and yet there is no plan for what to do. Sounds a bit like the date twenty thirty was chosen at random without any notion of how to achieve it. And furthermore, let's look at page one, seven, four, paragraph eleven point twelve. Here is a timetable for producing the outsourced strategy. Fifteen weeks of preparation and then just five weeks at the end to produce the plan. Forty five thousand pounds for five weeks' work. Nice work if you can get it. We see it twelve point three on the next page, that we can't produce this in-house as everyone is too busy elsewhere. And I do know the officers are really busy and doing great stuff with the limited resources available. And thank you them for all they are doing. But if we can afford to chuck forty five thousand pounds at a consultant for five weeks' work, why can't we use that money to employ someone over the longer term? And let's not assume that that twenty weeks to get to a plan is the end of the journey. Because then we, as members, including the Business and Housing Committee, need to review it. And then it needs, according to the purposes section on page one, six, three, to get consensus from everyone, everyone under the sun, including the not for profit and volunteer sector and partner stakeholders. I'm not sure why we're giving a veto on our economic strategy to them, but it will certainly cause even more delay. How disappointing, after eighteen months or so of this administration, that we now have this panic outsourcing of the policymaking. The result of so much dithering delay and of under resourcing of vital functions. In the meantime, Winchester is not getting the recovery plan, the roadmap forward, the city and the whole district so urgently need. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Lumby. I now call on councillor Pearson.
Thank you, Leader. Again, we'd love you to speak. Like councillor Lumby, I was encouraged and rather pleased to see the title of this paper. A new green economic development strategy. Yes, essential and so necessary. But again, like councillor Lumby, I'm bemused the fact that it's taken so long to actually come to the stage where we're not writing it ourselves, we're getting someone else to write it at forty five thousand quid? How many times have councillors so far during this meeting said how strapped they are for the council is for cash? And yet you're going to spend forty five thousand pounds over five months for somebody to write a strategy? Again, why aren't we employing an expert within the council to work with our existing economic team to do this work? It begs, it begs a question. Now, when I look at the strategy, it's little to criticise what he said because you're quoting facts that are there. Quite right that towards the end, I think it's paragraph, yes, it is eleven point three, where you say there is an existing database, a database accumulated by the county, by the LEAP, by the South Downs National Park. What about the database accumulated by Push? We are part of Push. It is the economic powerhouse in the south of Hampshire. And yet there's nothing in this paper referring and the need to work in partnership with them. There are one or two other anomalies. For example, in paragraph six point one A, you refer quite rightly to emissions from transport. That's uncontroversial. It is true. Somewhere between forty and forty five percent of our emissions are sourced the transport that we have existing. Changing slightly as more electric vehicles come on board, perhaps more people will buy, I think one of the cabinet members suggested, electric bikes, particularly for my generation. But what about the emissions from housing? Housing is mentioned in this paper, but there's no reference there. One of your leading guides within the policy, which I favour very much, is the importance of the environment. It's hardly mentioned as to what the impact of the economic, future economy changes that there are already afoot as a result of this dreadful disease we have with us at present. There's no references to the balance as to that between the the driving need for workplace, which councillor Ferguson quite rightly mentioned. Indeed, I was encouraged by councillor Ferguson's introduction. I thought perhaps it should have been in the actual paper itself. Because it's important what she said. It's, it's the emissions and the sheer cost of doing this over a short period of five, five months. It reminds me, I'm sorry, it's going to be a told you so, but then we have councillor Todd and councillor Lernie has referred to a number of times a told you so. It's the administration's, a previous administration's fault for a lot of the problems you've got now. So I'm going to tell you so. When you introduced your present strategy, economic, I said, hang on, you don't really know what you're doing on this stage now. And I've got to say, because you have no action plan. And now we come down to a keynote strategy about the economy, which councillor Ferguson quite sensibly and logically introduced, which I support very much our introduction. And yet you don't have an action plan. Or you're getting somebody else to write a strategy. But then you've still got to produce an action plan over and beyond that. And you've given yourself ten years, a ten years working plan. Well, the Soviets tried three years working plan. They tried five years working plan. They tried ten years working plan. And they didn't get anywhere. Well, they did after the execution of a lot of people. And I'm not suggesting you're going to propose that. But you have a lot of conservative people, small c, particularly in the rural areas, that you've got to persuade. Nothing about the need for that. It is a pure factual. We've got the database. We're going to build it now. Oh, but we've got to bring that up to date. I'm really a little disappointed in that because I looked so much forward when I saw this title to read in this paper. I had to read it three times before I could start getting any sense out of it. But it's a welcome paper. Sooner it is come later. I wish it had come sooner, but thank you very much. Disappointed, but welcome. Thank you, Leader. Forty five thousand pounds. Well, you've got a bit of money worth for me anyway.
Thank you very much councillor Pearson and councillor Lumby for your contributions. I don't know whether councillor Ferguson would like to answer any of those comments made. And whether also members of Cabinet have any questions to ask. I see that councillor Porter has got her hand up, but councillor Ferguson first.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to sort of respond to both councillor Lumby and councillor Pearson. I think it is, in many ways unjust to say that the councils had no plan to cope with the immediate aftermath of Covid nineteen. And that in fact, the local economy team has been doing sterling work to support our businesses during this unprecedented period. Not only making sure that we were one of the councils to make sure that all of the business grants and all of the support for businesses was got at them very, very quickly. And to make sure we supported as many businesses as we could across the district. But we also have in place and are working with a plan which is looking at how we invite our visitors back to the city, how we promote our businesses, how we support them. And all of that work is ongoing at this time. So to suggest there is no plan at this current time to deal with Covid nineteen is simply not correct. I'd also like to question where councillor Lumby got the five weeks from. It clearly sets out that while it will take five months, eight months of that is the council's procurement process. The consultants would actually work for three months because they will be doing the scoping stage, which is very important because it involves the consultation process. And one of the things that we know is to actually build a proper recovery, to reimagine our future for the district, to turn the district into a green, sustainable district. Then it's not something within the council's own gift to do. It has to be done in consultation and with all of our partners across the district. I think that suggesting that we don't have a plan is incorrect. And also suggesting that even when we create this plan, which will be ready in the spring of next year, that it will just be a strategy. If I refer councillor Lumby, councillor Pearson to eleven point seven, it does specifically say that one of the outputs we'll get from this plan is a phased development work plan and programmes of interventions with practical and achievable solutions to make sure we can make the transition. The point is, it will be a living document that actually does some work. I think the ten year time scale is correct in that we have set out our very ambitious plan to be carbon, for the district to be carbon neutral by twenty thirty. And to do that, we know it will take time and we need to start now. So I'm keen to get this work done. We don't have the in-house resource. We don't have the expertise in-house in terms of knowing what we need to do to make that green transition. And also, we don't have the resources right now to actually do the consultation in the way that we want to. So I recommend this paper to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. Councillor Porter, you have your, your hand up.
I do. Thank you. I want to support this proposal. Councillor Ferguson and I talked about this a lot and we, we know that this also is important as part of the local planning process. And I want to ensure that the outcome of this strategy also provides the local planning team with the evidence they will need to back up the proposals being made in the local plan. And I know that as well, this is going to look at the employment and skills plan as well. And it's really important to us that we develop the right jobs that fit with the skills that our residents have or develop the skills that they need, they need to have. In the last six months, Covid nineteen has turned our country around. In fact, it's turned our world and district round and and the government's leadership, which has failed to support our public with any credible plan for our country, has meant that it's been even more difficult to provide plans locally. We know locally that our economy is at the mercy of the government's failure to track and trace. And this is such an important part of what we're doing going forward. And the, the outcome of all of this is that the places that we thought were going to be very popular to go to work in, which is in London and, and other major cities may not now be the case. So councillor Ferguson is absolutely quite right to look freshly again at this conversation and to come up with a strategy that would be very relevant to the next ten years. I do think as well that it's most odd that we have Conservative councillors suggesting that specialists are not, and consultants are not the right sort of people to be using for this project. When we know consultants are brought in at Conservative government level at far greater cost than any of this for supposedly very minor work, pieces of work that could be done within government. So I do support this proposal. I do want to see a clear strategy which will include how Winchester City Council can contribute really positively to the economy of the whole district. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Porter. Have we any other members of Cabinet who wish to speak on this item? No, in that case, could I draw your attention to the recommendations on page one, six, four of the agenda pack? And are we agreed?
Agreed.
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 Thank you very much. Thank you. That's brilliant. Could we now move to item number fourteen, the forward plan? I don't have anyone to introduce this because it's, it's literally just for noting. But I have, I have got councillor Godfrey who wishes to speak on this item. So councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm grateful for the opportunity as always. I'm concerned that the forward plan does not represent the intentions of the administration insofar as its plans to introduce or discuss policy changes that might affect more than two wards and or seek approval for a significant expenditure. Because the forward plan remains extremely thin for the next, for the next periods. And has done for some time. My only positive is that it's, it's better than this time last year, when there are no items on the forward plan for November. I wonder if you can reassure me that work is continuing with the the major projects such as station approach or actually making progress on some of your own projects as we've just been debating on the, the green agenda. But the local plan is still going to feature in future discussions or that some of many council assets are being looked at to make sure we have improved revenues for future years. And of course, preparation for next year's budget as well as the medium-term financial strategy. When we were last in the administration, we extended the Forward Plan out to three months. So we had a better view and gave everyone else a better view of what was intended. And I wonder if, as well as giving me reassurance that something is happening in this council, that future intentions can be expressed in that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Godfrey. I'd just like to point out that the November meeting is actually a special meeting of Cabinet. It's an additional one that we've slotted in purely to bring forward those items that are on the Forward Plan for the November meeting. So, you know, to suggest that it's extremely thin is just nonsense because, as I say, it's an additional meeting slotted in to make sure that we are pushing ahead with projects at a greater rate than we would if we'd had to have left it over to the December-scheduled Cabinet. As for the three-months Forward Plan, it was something I thought that had come up during the review of the Constitution, but I'm not quite sure about that. I don't know whether any officers have any comments to make on that, but certainly it's something that we'll look into. But at the moment, we have Forward Plans on a monthly basis, and that's the way they are at the moment. So, that said, it's now 11:42. I'd like to draw this meeting to a close. And we have run over, but just by 10 minutes or so. But thank you all for your contributions, and thank you all for attending this morning. And see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leader.
Thank you.